All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call our meeting to order. And Pastor Reynolds, would you lead us in invocations, sir?
Let us pray. Gracious God, we pray for the members of our city council as they meet tonight. May they make decisions that are moral and rational and motivated not by selfless interest, but by a genuine concern for the people they serve. Be mindful, may they be mindful of our hearts and needs as well as our hopes and dreams. Empower them to be excellent in their governance and grant that they may work together in a spirit of collaboration to resolve important issues that affect our city. Give them and all of us wisdom and grace that we may live in peace with each other. Amen.
Face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Willis.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pizzi.
Here.
Mayor Malick.
Here.
Need a motion for the agenda, please?
We'll approve the agenda as written.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries five o. All the comments on items not on the agenda, I do have one card. Ms. Scott.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. I want commenting on the ongoing lamentation about the lack of development in Cocoa Beach. I wanted to just throw a little history out there that after I was mayor in 2002, Skip Beeler served several terms, Dave Nedersturm was elected, Mayor Malik's at the end of his second term. So, all those years, I'm just wondering if this development issue is so critical that where's the leadership been to try and bring some projects that would actually be approved by the residents who voted for the restrictions that everybody, when they want to complain about the lack of development, they, those restrictions were put in place of building height and density was lowered. Like, for example, in hotel, the density was lowered from forty units per acre to twenty-eight. Now, that was pretty significant. And a lot of the conversation then was not being able to control the traffic on our major thoroughfare through here. So, to compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges, you all have my little paper that I made up, where all the cities in the barrier islands actually are just barely under sixteen square, square miles. Cocoa Beach is four point nine. Cape Canaveral's two point three. On the list that Mayor Malik mentioned, and I can see it's very enviable that Palm Bay would have half a billion dollars' worth of development, but they're like ninety-seven square miles. They have all this vacant land. I just don't know, I mean, sad to lament about it, but where are we going to go? Do you want us all to leave? I understood from the nice pastor tonight that the Diamond Bay property next to the Eight Frame Church has got a for sale sign on it. I understand money is tight. Weston Hotels kind of stalled on their project. But we have done some redevelopment in Cocoa Beach. That's about all we can do is redevelopment. I don't know where the peer's going to go, if they're going to get financing to suit them to go along with their project, but two big shopping centers, two new public stores have, I mean, maybe we don't get enough money out of the, these stores or the, charging people for alcohol. That seems to be a big business here. All the new business, when we were going to have better quality people coming here, has turned into people who want to come here and drink. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Hearing none? All right, move right along. Staff reports?
I have two items, Commissioner. The first one is the parking on North First Street that the commission requested that we switch out to ninety-minute parking. That has been completed. And the second item I have is the, the Country Club renovations will begin on August sixteenth, out in various parts of the, of this facility. And we've tried our best to minimize the impact on activities here, but that will start on August fifteenth, which includes new painting of the whole interior, new carpeting, and furniture. That's all I have.
City Attorney?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
City Commission, Vice Mayor?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Willis?
I have nothing.
Mr. Williams?
I'll pass.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
So, I bring this, I don't know if we can pull this up so they can enjoy, you guys have a copy of this. I put this together just because I actually had a resident that, that asked for why this was on our radio, a commission agenda, just for visibility. I didn't have a LinkedIn in these charts, who was kind of trying to analyze the data last week, real time was being presented. So, I just wanted to put together a summary just to illustrate some of the decisions I think we need to really focus on, but this is what I called a variance analysis from the, from the city hall project. You guys got a hard copy, wait till she brings that up. But basically, it's just the historical changes that have happened and just puts it in a graphical form to understand sort of how we got here. But, like I said, part of my goal was I was trying to follow the numbers, how we, the bouncing ball, I just wanted to put it in a consolidated dashboard. Because I think there's some big decisions we got to, there we go. So, starting on the left, that's what was pitched last July, the one story. And I apologize, it's bad chartmanship with the green and white text, but it was a quote from previous Mike Miller, who ironically is an architect, said that he preferred that one story. So, graphically, the, the blue and orange, it's not gay or colors, but that's your cost and your size growth over the years, the four iterations, I should say, the five iterations. The second column is July twenty-second, the two-story design, slightly larger, slightly higher price. And then we sent out the RFP, which is the September twenty-two data points, and then you can see the growth from there. So, the box, the takeaway box, again, I apologize, over the January twenty-three design, that's effectively the seven point five million that we, what I'm calling funded, that we went through last week in the, the funding source. And to the right of that, any of the growth, the eleven point five million that we talked about, the larger city hall, is going to have to be funded either with debt or state grants. So, it just, for me, graphically, I wanted to illustrate that, hey, here's where we got to a rat, we're talking about taking on four million dollars worth of debt or the potential grant, and then all the relevant stats are on the table below and how it's broken out by individual room. But, I don't know, I wanted to get that out there because I think there has been some pretty big growth, and I think we need to be careful on how we spend that money. Lori, can you go forward one chart? And another, the second piece I pulled was some of the target numbers that actually W&amp;J put forward of different projects they've had in the last year. I saw, I see there's a trend, but the top four, or the top three are projects they completed in twenty-two. This is part of their RFP pitch last July. And then what we sent out was the target, three fifteen dollars per square foot, but we're tracking for almost double that. So, just wanting to get this out there and public record and have that as discussion points as we start going forward and analyzing this cost.
I agree that the price per square foot seems pretty crazy compared to what we reported.
Yeah, go ahead. After you, sir.
So, just to refresh the public, when did we move out of City Hall?
About a year and three or four months ago.
Oh, it was in early twenty twenty-two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, Jeremy, you know, you weren't here. Or were you here then?
On the commission or as a resident?
As a commission.
No.
So, yeah, that's true.
No, I understand timelines.
So, so, what, what I'm going to frame for you is, you know, I don't want, I don't want to put any blame on anybody, but in hindsight, it almost looks like a bait and switch. I mean, we moved everybody out of City Hall. We spent a bunch of money putting in cubicles, relocating people, dropping phone lines, comm lines, everything else in public works, so we could get people out of City Hall, so we could tear down City Hall, which basically left us, lack of a better word, pregnant, that we had to build a new City Hall. Okay? So, what was agreed to was, as you said, the seven point five million, okay? And of that, at the time, our consultants or lobbyists had put in that we were going to get back about one point five million for hurricane hardening the, the structure. So, it would have been a little bit cheaper than the seven point five million. Well, that got line item vetoed by the governor, so that seven point five is now, you would have to pay the whole seven point five. But now, lobbyists are telling us that, you know, well, we didn't get the one point five million, but we're really in line for this four million for...
Five million.
Okay, five million for hurricane hardening, which makes up the difference between the seven point five and eleven point five. But you and I both know, we got vetoed this year, are we going to make it or break it? It's a gamble. But basically, at their last meeting, we said that we didn't give Wayne full authority to proceed with the project, no matter what came in on the, on the no guaranteed maximum price, without it coming back to the commission. So, it will come back to the commission once that number comes in, okay? And then we can make, we have another opportunity for a decision. So, basically, you know, between a rock and a hard spot, and, you know, the, the A and E that we hired, you know, we said seventy-five, seven point five million, fit all these people in there, and they, you know, can do a lot in, in the design biz and say, okay, we'll put all these people here, these people here, you know, bullpen situation, which isn't ideal for the functioning of the city, but it met that number. We bought into it, and then, oh, that's not going to work, and people aren't going to be able to function, they need cubicles with little walls to block some sound, a whole bunch of people need offices, and needs to be, and therefore, it needs to be bigger. So, you know, like I said, we're kind of stuck. You know, it's, it's almost a bait and switch. Once we moved out of City Hall, we basically bought into the inevitable, whatever it's going to run into. So, I see your, the bottom of your slide said, you know, should we send it out for a second RFP? I'm not so convinced that that's in the best interest of the city because we have all these people that work for the city in cramped conditions, that are anticipating us to go forwards in the new city hall. We need to retain those employees and leave them that hope. But I wish there was some better way to get any kind of guarantee that we might actually get this grant for the changes we've made to the facility to hurricane harden it.
Pray. Pray for the grant.
Thank you, Commissioner Hutchinson. You know, appreciate the info and the timeline and how we got here. I just got this today, so, you know, allow us the opportunity to review it, and I, I can tell you, from having talked to a lot of our other elected officials over the years, including the mayor of Indian Harbor Beach, Scott Nickel, who's a land development engineer by trade, they started that in twenty seventeen. The year that it's CO'd is not the year they got the bid. So, big delta between twenty seventeen and twenty-two. I think gas was under two bucks then, so, you know, we, we got to be mindful of those cost overruns, but, and, and if you talk to the contractor, and I would encourage that we do, that's not their bid. They haven't given us a bid yet. I think there's lots of value engineering to be done, just like we did with the police station and everything else. Now, the paralysis of indecision over the last twenty years has cost us millions of dollars because we weren't able to, to move forward. Commissioner Williams, you were here, we could have done all of it for significantly less had we made a decision. But I appreciate you bringing this to light. I think it's something that we need to chew on. I personally don't think five hundred and eighty-five dollars is an accurate figure. I think it can be trimmed back as well. And the grant, it's, it's a, you know, every grant's iffy, right? We can't count on it. We have to have a plan B.
Yeah, and you know, you said the exact same thing. It was last week, I was trying to analyze the numbers real time, so I could only do so much. My intent was to get this on record for the residents to consume and chew on and, and have input. The second piece of that is the value engineering, we've set the high mark, right? So, I'm concerned that we're losing opportunities to value engineering as soon as we set that high mark. It's not going to get any easier going forward.
I think we have plenty of opportunity for that.
And that's kind of why I'm forced and got the commission's support, that when that guaranteed maximum price comes back, it has to come back to us, and we can scrutinize it for such things as value engineering.
Any other comments, sir? All right. Just a couple things. So, when I first moved to Cocoa Beach in two thousand and seven, the rents on A-1A, A-1A, Ocean Drive, six dollars a square foot. You had plumbing stores, AC shops, it was dead. Why? It was our prohibitive land development code. Couldn't do anything. Couldn't put a restaurant there, couldn't put anything there. Why? Because for every seat, you have to have two parking spaces. Yeah, we're a built-out barrier island, there's no land left. What we had to do was change our land development codes. What we have seen numerically proven by audited financials is the values of our CRA property have gone up over a hundred million dollars, because now there are nearly thirty restaurants downtown. That's a significant impact. In terms of large-scale projects, financing couldn't be more difficult right now. I can, all the regional banks have pretty much turned off the faucet. Money is extremely tight. If you recall, when the president said people wouldn't be paying for those bank failures, I don't think he understands how banking works. Every bank is getting assessed a hefty FDIC assessment for bailing out those two banks, and they also have to set aside larger capital reserves for lending, which means the faucet is turned off. To that end, it is critical that we continue to look at the four areas we carved out, just four areas representing thirteen percent. I did talk with the Weston folks. They are close to securing their financing. They did get a significant backer from Marriott, which is the parent company of Weston. So, that project is going to go forward. They did tell me by some point in the second quarter of next year, they hope to start. And based on what all the financial analysts are saying, rates should be better at that point as well. That being said, the other projects, look, we, the Surf Condos are almost CO'd downtown. That's the first new building we've seen in twenty years. That will be another bump to our CRA. And once that CRA sunsets, that money stays with, within general fund. So, there are certainly some things going on right now, there's certainly some headwinds in our economy. Again, financing and lending is very tight. By building that parking garage using our CRA, that was the catalyst to changing all those uses from what I call industrial users to restaurants, and it, we've created our own success down there. A hundred million dollar increase is a pretty hefty investment. So, I, you know, I stand by the, the development changes that we've made. And I just wanted to formally announce that I will be resigning as of August of this month. I have accepted a position that precludes me from holding public office. So, I will finish this month. City Attorney, we've spoken, there is a process to appoint somebody, and we'll need to do that by next meeting, because we have a budget that needs to get passed in September. It's been a wonderful opportunity for eleven and a half years to move the ball forward. Please just keep moving the ball in the right direction. Thanks.
My pleasure, sir.
Are you still going to be a resident in Cocoa Beach?
I'll still be coming up here and letting you know how I feel about certain things in my feelings.
About different things when you're on that side.
It'd be a, a nice viewpoint on the other side.
Becky, good question.
Yes.
According to the charter, in my recollection, should, you say you're going to finish out August, which we need to be here for the seventeenth meeting?
And the twenty-second.
Twenty-second. Okay. So, um, okay, the twenty-second is the special meeting?
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's Tuesday.
So, you would still serve as mayor through August?
Through August.
Twenty-second.
But you guys need to pick somebody by the twenty-second.
But we shouldn't pick, well, obviously, per our charter, Vice Mayor becomes mayor.
Yes.
Okay. And then, per our rotation, Lori, who's next in line to be Vice Mayor?
Seat five, Commissioner Hutchinson.
So, you'd end up being Vice Mayor. And then, not to cut you short, because just, we try to keep up the same rotation, we would just reappoint you in November, so you could continue to service Vice Mayor. But on the twenty-second, if that's the mayor's last meeting, Lori or Becky, and it's a special meeting, can we appoint somebody at that meeting?
As long, as long as it is listed as an agenda item on the special meeting. You can't bring up extraneous things at a special meeting.
Right, right. So, is that special meeting required to be advertised?
No, no, we don't advertise, I mean, obviously, it gets put on our website and we announce it.
Right, but we don't have to pay that for advertising? If we put the appointment of a, a new city commissioner on there, does that meet the bar to have to advertise it?
No.
Okay.
No, that's not required.
Okay. All right. So, I guess the message to the commission is be prepared on the twenty-second, sometime after you step down, Keith moves over, Jeremy becomes Vice Mayor, that we would debate a new commissioner appointee?
Yep.
And we did have a process that we went through when Commissioner Martinez resigned. So, you know, there were, I believe, advertisements, it went out that, you know, people should apply.
City Clerk, we have that process, right? The application?
We did it both ways. Either the commission appointed somebody without that process, or we went through that process.
Yeah.
Either way.
So, I guess the commission would need to, because there's, there's not a requirement in the charter or in the code that says you have to use a particular process, you just have to vote to choose someone?
Eventually, we have to appoint somebody, or we end up with a quorum of four.
And you might, you might want to decide very, very quickly how you want to do that, whether you want people to apply, whether...
I, I think we could not, this is new, breaking news, so I think we can dwell on that till our meeting on the seventeenth.
Last time we appointed somebody, yeah, but I think we should think about it.
Yeah, I don't think I'm ready to jump into deciding to go through the application process because when we've done that before, it takes another month and a half, so we're not going to have somebody sitting up here to help us run the city business on the twenty-second.
And another thing to keep in mind, so the, the bridge was appointed last time, and it was in an election year, so Keith's seat was awarded, I don't know if that would be an option, so the appointee would be until twenty-four of next year.
Would end up being in, in...
I would stay mayor until next term, and then you would be Vice Mayor.
Rather than a three-month appointee bridge, it would be eighteen months or sixteen months, whatever it is.
Does that mean I move to seat one, and he moves to seat two then, and we have to find someone for seat five? Is that what you're saying?
No.
No, no. Lori, tell us how that goes.
You would be moving to seat one, Becky, correct me if I'm not correct. Commissioner, Vice Mayor Pizzi, you would become seat one, you would be the mayor, and then you would remain in your seat, seat five, then you would just become Vice Mayor. So, the appointment would be for your...
For seat two, okay.
For seat two. Well, is that all your party comments? You're going to save them for the twenty-second?
I'll, I'll wait till the twenty-second, sir. I learned to be brief. Brevity is a gift here. Unfinished business?
Okay. Item one, adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash oh eight, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Cocoa Beach, Florida, establishing the associated civil penalties fines for the issuance of a civil citation for a violation of chapter thirteen point five noise and providing for an effective date. Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash oh eight would set the penalty for a noise violation as a class five offense with first offense at two hundred and fifty dollars and a repeat offense of five hundred dollars. City representative, City Commission, recommendation, adopt.
We'll adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh eight.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Ms. Scott?
I just, on this item, I would like the city attorney to please explain to the public, many people have asked me, and I don't know why, Commissioner Willis can vote on these issues with the past resolution, and also, it's, you know, she's pretty much defended the restaurants that are making the noise, the main source of infraction, what is it, Area One Forty-two, where the night after, about three or four commission meetings ago, after really supporting or not supporting the commission to change the ordinance to, in their response to many, many residents' complaints, she performed there at Area One Forty-two, and you could hear it four blocks away. So, if, you know, if you're performing there and supporting it, and you're elected to support the voters, I just would like the attorney to please comment on that. Thank you.
Let me, let me stopgap the attorney. The ordinance was passed by four to one, okay? And I don't want to get into weeds about Commissioner Willis and what she does for her side job and her defenses or whatever, because basically, it's a moot point, because this is, you know, I, in all honesty, I believe this will pass maybe four to one again. But, you know, we really don't need to, you know, throw anybody under the bus or ask anybody to recuse themselves or have the city attorney make a determination.
Excuse me, I rise to a point of order that the commission is not to engage in conversation with the public on their public comment. Thank you.
Skip, you know, I'd like to say something to you, Skip. Skip.
I was talking, I was talking to the commission.
That's only convenient when you're agreeing with the person.
Actually, I've asked the city attorney about this. Can you tell him what you told me?
I told you that you did not have a conflict, that you could be hired and they could turn the volume down slightly. I asked you if that was true, and you said yes. And the city commission is elected by the entire city, and the fact that normally, when we have public comment, about half of the people who come to the meeting are in favor, half are opposed, the fact that someone strongly has a political idea is not a basis for any kind of recusal. This would not have a financial benefit or loss to her, so, no, I don't believe she does have a conflict.
Thank you for that clarification.
I think that you are the voice of the people that are in favor of it, and I think that you have every right to speak your mind on that, because... and I think that you have every right to speak your mind on that, because we all are representing everybody in the community. So without your voice, that sect of the community would not have got representation. So I appreciate you speaking up on that matter. And I think you did your job by putting your vote out there, so thank you.
Thank you.
And that's how good governance works, folks. Any other public comments?
I just want to second Keith's sentiments for Ms. Willis. I think she's fair, although she was on the one side or the other, doesn't matter. She's the one that asked for a committee or a committee on both sides to try to figure out a middle ground on this thing. And that didn't happen, so I think that she was trying to get more information on the sound, on the decibel readers, because you can't really, it's not a black and white, objective situation. So, four blocks away, I didn't see her with a decibel reader on that, but I had a decibel reader on all the big shows there, and I think it's well within the ordinance, the decibel readers. We took your suggestions on moving the stage and moving the speakers, and I commend Keith and Ms. Willis. I don't know if the rest of you have been there or not. I commend you if you have, but at least you have seen progress. And what we're trying to do is work with everybody. And, you know, we're not trying to fight, we're not trying to say it's black and white, but there is middle ground there. And I think that if there was more education on how the noise travels from one sound to another, or if the speakers are pointed one way or another, I don't know. But I think by attacking Ms. Willis, it's unfounded, because she voted on what was put in front of her. I don't think that she took one side or another, because she played in a band. I think she's fair and open-minded to see both sides. And I think there's middle ground on both sides, so I think that we're just trying to work together, and I look forward to working with you guys moving forward. So, I'm not trying to fight with anybody, I'm just trying to work within the ordinance.
Thank you.
Sir, can you give your name and address for the record that's part of it?
I'm Dave Rubel, 6300 Hudson, Cocoa, Florida.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Hearing none. City Attorney, item H1.
Don't have a vote?
I'm sorry, thought we did. All in favor? Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Four to one. You're like a-
Hey.
City Attorney, item H1.
Adopt ordinance number 1681 on first reading and ordinance of the City of Cocoa Beach, Florida, relating to the city's budget reserve policy, making findings, providing for the establishment and maintenance of committed and non-committed budget reserves beginning in fiscal year 2022, 2023 through 2028, 2029, and providing for conflict severability in an effective date. Ordinance number 1681 adopts the budget reserve policy by ordinance. The second reading and adoption of the ordinance is planned for September 21, 2023. City representative, city commission, recommendation, adopt.
I move to adopt ordinance 1681 on the first reading.
Second. Any public comment?
Just for info, this ordinance is raising our city reserve requirement from 17% to 19%, which gets us closer to having a full three months of reserved money for operating expenses, should we get hit by a hurricane and have to fork out a bunch of money. We always pre-contract debris people to be hitting the ground running day after any storm could hit, contingency-wise, they're already on contract. And it cleans up the city faster, repiles up the bills faster. And they always get their FEMA people out there to monitor the loads and sometimes it takes us three years to get all the money back from FEMA, but we need to have a little extra in our operating reserves. And the budget's supporting that, and that's why we added this ordinance.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, Mr. Lowes?
John Lowes, Dempsey Drive, mayor, I would like to speak to this slide, is that okay?
It's not really an agenda item, per se, I mean, we've already gone over it, we're on item H1.
Yeah, I understand that, I thought that you were calling the meeting, I thought you were going to adjourn the meeting, we didn't get a chance to speak.
No, we haven't voted on item H1 yet.
I'm sorry.
No worries. Any other item, public comment on H1? Nope, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. General public comment?
John Lowes, Dempsey Drive, thank you for that practice session. I'm going to just try to move this slide here, how do I get this slide to go down? Okay. Just a couple thoughts just to consider, please, as a commission. As the mayor mentioned, the four projects that are listed as complete, they all say 2022, but I'm going to imagine that the origin of that project was probably at least two years prior to that, I don't know that, but it makes sense that it wasn't 2022. And the price per square foot that's shown there would reflect the price that was set possibly two years before 2022, so maybe 2020 plus or minus. Now, our 2023 Cocoa Beach price, we don't have any quotes for that, that's just an estimate, that's an architectural estimate. But I think if you look at the date comparison up there, I think it's pretty clear that since COVID hit, when COVID hit, the world kind of came to a stop. But when it started spinning again, all costs went up, everything, we're still fighting it today. And construction costs specifically today, as we stand here today, are approximately 50% higher than they were two years ago. If you go back two years, two years, you could get a price that's 50% better than today. So we're being impacted by today's price, but those other projects, assumably, were not impacted by today's price. And in two years, it's up about 50%, so it's noteworthy, because that's a deal changer when you look at how much it's going to cost us. The second thing is, I think, that our 11 and a half million, if I'm correct on this, I think that includes our green space. And the other projects that are listed here, I'm going to imagine that they don't have an auxiliary project like a green space in there. So I would say to make a fair comparison, we would have to remove the green space cost to level the field. And then, lastly, you know, we're smarter today than we were a couple of years ago. I don't think there's anybody in this room that would like to go back to a single-floor design. When we raised to the second floor and the wash through, that is just really smart in today's environment. And that was a bump up in cost. But I don't think anybody would be willing to take that back. So I made three comments, but I think that those comments should be applied to that comparison to make it as fair a comparison as possible. Thank you.
Any other public comment? No? All right, meeting adjourned.